First page in the workbook. I will go over the tables and grids. First grid in the workbook is grid A4. A4 contains revision number one. It is for the Omar Residential and Adjacent Properties highlighted in yellow. Proposed auction is for the properties to go from W5, S5 to W3, S3. And the reason for that is an approved preliminary plan. It has been approved for the Omar Residential subdivision. It is for 27 single-family homes and 61 townhomes. And as you can see on the yellow shading in the area of revision one, there are also adjacent parcels to the main development that will also be receiving water and sewer service as a result of the development of the subdivision. Again, our recommendation is for that to go to W3, S3, which means development within the next one to five years. The second revision on grid A4 is for several parcels along Hartford Road, very near to Bagley Street, which is the street that runs in the middle of the yellow parcels. These parcels are being recommended to go from S6 to S3, which means that previously it had no anticipated service within 11 to 20 years. However, there's been some activity by the owners in the, some of the lots within the subdivision to move forward with extending public sewer to their lots. We're recommending that go to S3 category because the lots are within 400 feet and existing sewer main and meet all of the criteria to be developed at this time. The third revision proposed on the water and sewer master plan maps for the addition of-
I hate to interrupt, I'm sorry. Are you able to share your presentation?
Yes. There you go. Would you like me to begin again or continue on?
Mr. President, I'll let that be your call.
I would say go ahead again.
Okay, I can do that. Beginning with the workbook, we have three revisions on the water and sewer maps in the water and sewer plan. The first was for Omar Village Residential. As I had stated before, without the video, we're recommending that those parcels be moved from the five category to the three category, which means development within the next one to five years. And the property does meet the criteria in the master plan to have been placed in that category because it has an approved preliminary plan. And you can see again on the maps, now that you can see the maps, you can see that there are adjacent properties that are also planned to receive water and sewer service as a result of this development. The second revision is adjacent by quarter mile of the street on Hartford Road at the intersection with Bagley Road. There are approximately 11 lots in this area that are within 400 feet of existing sewer main and do meet the criteria to be in the three category. And there are at least two properties within this area that would like to connect the sewer by extending it a short distance so that they may be connected. And so therefore, we're recommending that go from the S6 category, which is 11 to 20 years of development, to the S3, which means it should develop within the next one to five years. The third proposed revision is for the Garden Glen subdivision. This property looks along Laurel Bush Road, just north of the intersection with Hookers Mill Road. And we're recommending that go from the W1, S1 category to W3, S3. It was previously in the existing category because it did have an existing home on the property with a water and sewer connection. But with this proposed development for 30 townhomes, we recommend it go to the three category. It's mainly just a record-keeping exercise so that we can keep accurate count of how many new lots are being created within the water and sewer district. This subdivision, Ms. Gordon Glenn, does have an approved preliminary plan through the Department of Planning and Zoning for 30 townhomes. The map changes. And we do have a few changes in chapter three, which is the water chapter. First change is some bookkeeping in section 313 titled Proposed Developments. There are several developments which have been completed as far as water and sewers concerned with water and sewer having been constructed and home building may begin. Those projects that are being removed since it's completed is the enclave at Box Hill down near the Wegmans in that area behind the Wegmans Shopping Center, and also Monarch Glen, which is off of Wheel Road, which is a single-family development. The TWS Tollgate property, which was part of the Magnus Overlook subdivision in and around southwest of the town of Bel Air. You can see a brief description I've added in the workbook of each of these projects that are being removed. You can see where they're being stricken out when the update of the book occurs. The added projects will be for Omar's Village Residential, which I described easier earlier with the map change, and the Garden Glen subdivision, which I have just described. Those brief descriptions will be added into section 313. Also, in chapter three, as we do every six months, we're updating table 31, titled Plan Developments. I put a summary on the television here. However, the entire table is provided in your workbook showing how various properties have developed in the last six months. I'll give a brief summary of some of the changes. The Beach Creek subdivision, south of the city of Aberdeen or west of the city of Aberdeen, has had many more lots developed. And therefore, you can see we're moving lots around, showing how some of them are now in the existing category. Houses are currently being constructed on them. Also, you can see Crossroads at Hickory is an apartment complex in the Hickory area. Previously estimated as having only 29 commercial-type water and sewer equivalent units constructed on it, but it does have approval now for 184 apartments in those various lots at the Crossroads at Hickory in the Hickory area. Garden Glen has been added, as you can see. And I would just like to take you now to the summary that's shown on the screen. And that does show that these are the units totaled by, broken down by zoning category. The first line that's been revised shows that in fall of 2019, in the last update, there were 3,161 residential units with approved preliminary plans for development. However, due to approvals in the spring of 2020, as of this workbook, there's now 3,602 units zoned residentially with approved preliminary plans, which shows that there's been an increase of 441 units into the inventory with approved preliminary plans. And likewise, you can see in the B zoning category in the spring, there has been an increase in 214 equivalent units based upon the changing use in the Hickory Overlook subdivision with the apartments I just mentioned. And that increases 150. And the industrial acreage in approvals has increased by 100 to 404 acres, or 404 acres. The next table in chapter three that we have a few proposed revisions is table 38. Revisions were not stated, but the city of Aberdeen did provide us with a request for three minor revisions to their capital water projects. One was to remove a project that has supposedly been completed. I'm not sure what the answer is. But Swan Meadows Water Main Replacement is asked to be stricken as to what's been completed. And also, for the project name is the Elevated Storage Tank at the Heat Center. The specific size of the tank has been removed since that may be changed due to their planning. And also, for the Ashley Treatment Center, they wanted identified that the anticipated date to begin their construction activities toward providing it with water began in 2019. So that's been changed to reflect that. Those were all the proposed changes in chapter three, which was the water chapter. In chapter four, we also have a couple minor revisions, one being in table 42, which are capital plant sewerage projects. City of Aberdeen had one proposed change for that. And that was also for the Ashley Treatment Center. They wanted it to be identified that the construction activities to provide sewer service to that facility began in 2019. Last proposed revision in table 43 in chapter four is an update of the discharge record of septic haulers chart. It shows all of the 2019 data. And it has been broken down by month for all septic tank, holding tank, and commercial waste to the said sod running wastewater treatment plan for treatment. This summary is required to be posted every year at the completion of the calendar year to show what has happened in the recent year for the Maryland Department of the Environment. And we have complied with their requirements and placed it in here. The very last segment of the workbook was the requests that we received. And those are provided for your reference. We did address and positively all the requests that we did receive. And that concludes my presentation. You have any questions?
Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Mr. President, there is no one present to speak.
All right, then, thank you. This will conclude this public hearing. And I want to thank Carol again for your presentation. And this will be considered at our next county council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And this will conclude the public hearing for this evening. And I guess we can roll right into the council meeting. Is that okay, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I have 7:34.
So again, if I may, Chair calls the order Legislative Session Day 20-011. And counsel, if there's no objection, I'll take this as general consent that we suspend our rules of procedure to allow the council to meet remotely and with a modified agenda during the ongoing health emergency. Objection? Thank you. Those of you who may be just now tuning in, we want everyone to know that we are live streaming on a virtual format. And we are abiding by the executive orders by both Governor Hogan and County Executive Glassman. I want to reach out and thank Nick Kuba, Brian Sill, George Beerman, and Hartford County IT Department for their help in bringing this forward, along with Alex Gartner from DSI, our council administrator, Ms. Dixon, and Ms. Harris for assisting us in this process. While we are navigating through these uncharted waters and uncertain times, we would ask everyone for your patience. And remember, we are all in this together, and together we will get through this. So at this time, if you would join me in standing for the pledge, followed by this evening's opening prayer by Councilman Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All heads and hearts bow. Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for allowing us to serve this great and mighty country. Lord, we ask you, as we go through these trying times, that you give us the knowledge, wisdom, and this understanding that this country was found on. We ask you to watch over the healthcare providers, first responders, and anyone on the front lines during this pandemic. We ask you to heal this country, this state, this county, as well as this world. We ask all these things in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for those words. Agenda item number four, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointment, Audit Advisory Board, may I have a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Walter Allen Tilly to the Audit Advisory Board.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeds. It's moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Walter Allen Tilly. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroeds?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Buola?
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Agenda item number five, special presentations, COVID-19 update. It's my pleasure to invite Dr. Moynihan, Hartford County Health Officer. Done mute.
Hope, oh. Let's see.
You're good, sir.
Good. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you to Council President DeSante and county council members for this opportunity to update you on the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic as it's impacting Hartford County. First, an update on the numbers. As of today, April 7th, and these statistics are always updated by 10:00 a.m. at coronavirus.maryland.gov. Worldwide, more than 1,400,000 cases. And there were 870,000 cases last week. Worldwide, more than 76,000 deaths. There were 43,000 deaths last week. In the United States, nearly 400,000 cases. There were about 188,000 cases last week. And in the United States, more than 12,000 deaths. And there were about 4,000 deaths last week. So you can see it's rapidly increasing. In Maryland, as of today, April the 7th, there's 4,371 cases. And last week, there was 1,660 cases. And in Maryland, 103 deaths as of today. And last week, there were 18 deaths. So you can see the trend. The trend is rapidly escalating. In Hartford County, the website says that Hartford County has 59 cases. We have internal records showing that there are 66 cases as of today. And we also have internal records that show there were 12 new cases today so that by tomorrow, there should be 78 cases. We're not sure if the Maryland website will catch up with it. We're aware of 78 cases. And as of this time, no deaths yet in Hartford County, to Hartford County residents. So at our last briefing on March 17th, we talked about the one intervention that everyone at the national state levels are encouraging, and that's social distancing. And that's resulted in the governor's stay-at-home order. And there's a stay-at-home order in at least 41 other states because social distancing has a track record of having worked in previous pandemics. But it takes time for social distancing to work. And so the next question being asked is even with social distancing, how long will this pandemic last? When will we see it peak and then go down? When will the curve flatten? And that's what a lot of the folks in the news are talking about. They're talking about projection models. So I just want to touch on that a little bit. Just review the many projection models for how COVID-19 will affect the country and Maryland. So there are so many different opinions on these projection models. Last month, a state health department official gave a briefing and said they thought the cases would peak in July. There's a University of Pennsylvania projection model that says it'll peak in mid-May. But the projection model being used at the national level is the University of Washington Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation Model. And that can be found at healthdata.org. This is the projection model that seems to have gotten most of the attention. The model developed by Dr. Christopher Murray, the model that's alluded to by Dr. Burks and Dr. Fauci at the president's daily press conferences. But these numbers change every few days depending on additional data coming in. So as of today, that model says that the peak in the United States is projected to be on April the 16th, which is just a week and a half away, with 81,766 total deaths estimated by beginning of August. The Maryland peak is projected to be around April the 18th. And they even try to get projections. And you know, the projections are only as good as the data that they have. But this is on a national website, so just to go over what they say. They say that in Maryland, 6,443 hospital beds are needed. And that there are 3,961 beds available. They're projecting a bed shortage of 2,482. They're projecting, they're saying ICU beds needed, 1,224. There are only 266 ICU beds available with a 958 ICU bed shortage. They're projecting 138 deaths a day. They're projecting 2,326 deaths in Maryland by early August. But to emphasize, these are projections based on a national model and data at the national level. We know that the state's working with the academic centers, Hopkins and University, and the Maryland Hospital Association and others in Maryland to look at Maryland-specific numbers. And hopefully, there'll be some more precise county-specific numbers coming out when the state shares that with us. Also, to reemphasize, projections are just projections. They give us a sense of how fast the surge may come. But that can be greatly altered by how seriously people take social distancing. If it's not taken seriously, the peak could have a steep surge within a few weeks. And that could probably result in a lot more deaths. But if social distancing is taken seriously, the curve could be flattened, in which case the number of deaths may be greatly reduced. So the realization is that people take this seriously or very bad things could happen, which is why the message to get across, unless you need to go outside for something that is truly a matter of health and life, like groceries for eating, pharmacies for medicines, all other things, even if there is an economic impact, should be deferred. And that's a very hard message. So to get ready for the surge, there have been many new events and directives have taken place in just the last few days. It's very challenging to keep up with these changes. It's especially challenging to see recommendations that were made just a few months ago that have so quickly changed. But it's not surprising because, as the state's Deputy Secretary of Public Health says, the COVID-19 coronavirus is a sneaky virus. So for example, first, originally it was thought to be primarily affecting older people, those age 60 and over. But what Maryland's data shows is that 68% of people affected are between the ages of 20 and 60. In addition, the original guidance was that the highest-risk populations were those age 60 and over with underlying medical conditions like diabetes, heart disease, and lung disease. But what they're now saying is the highest-risk populations are those who are age 60 and over. And then there's a second, separate group, those with underlying medical conditions regardless of their age. Second, originally, it was thought that only those who showed symptoms, like fever or cough, were most infectious. Plus, there was that condition that you had to have travel history to high-risk country to be considered at risk. But now, with the United States having the most COVID-19 infections of any country in the world, the highest-risk country in the world for COVID-19 infections is the United States. CDC just issued guidance on March 30th that changed the period of exposure risk from, it used to be the day of onset of symptoms. That was when you were most infectious, the day you first showed symptoms. They changed that now to 48 hours before the day of symptom onset. So what that means is that a COVID-19 positive person could be infectious for up to 48 hours before they display any symptoms, which means you could consider every person with or without symptoms as potentially being infectious with the COVID-19 virus. Up to 25% of people with COVID-19 have no symptoms. This change is not just theoretical. It has a big impact on how we address this pandemic. So in early March, just a month ago, the focus was greatly on quickly identifying new cases and then doing intensive contact tracing to see who that person may have exposed the virus to. That was the containment phase. But now, one month later, in early April, the understanding is that all people could be carriers of the virus, that all people could be infectious. So resources for intensive contact tracing now needs to be reprioritized to focus on those high-risk populations like nursing homes. This is now the mitigation phase. What was happening in nursing homes was that they were all adopting all of the right precautions, like restricting access to essential visits only, or restricting activities and visitors with potential for exposure, or actively screening individuals entering the building, or requiring all individuals entering the building to wash their hands at entry, or establishing processes to allow remote communication for residents and others. Now that we know that anyone with symptoms or without symptoms can be infectious, so that any staff member who walks into the facility, even if they are feeling completely well, could potentially infect an older resident with underlying medical conditions. So on the Sunday, just this last Sunday, April 5th, following the Carroll County nursing home situation in which of the 95 residents at that nursing home, 77 have tested positive, as well as 27 staff members having tested positive, as well as at least 10 resident deaths so far, the Maryland Department of Health has issued a number of health orders. One requires all nursing home staff in the state who interact with residents to wear personal protective equipment, PPE. Second, requiring nursing homes who test residents for COVID-19 to do so through the Maryland State Lab. Because before, they were sending them, some of them were sending them to commercial labs that could take up to seven days for a result. Now, they're being asked to, or actually required to send it to the Maryland State Lab because the state lab can do these results in under 24 hours. And then another order is to require nursing homes to designate personnel to care for known and suspected residents with COVID-19 in a separate room that serves as an observation area so that newly admitted and readmitted residents will stay in this observation area for 14 days and be monitored. Also, they're asked to have an additional observation area designated to care for residents who've been designated to have or suspected to have COVID-19. So these are a lot of large changes taking place at the nursing homes. And yesterday, with assistance from the folks at Upper Chesapeake Health and the county's Department of Emergency Services, we had a very good conference call with the Hartford County, all six Hartford County nursing homes, to be sure we were all on the same page and to help with any areas of need. And let me tell you one of the big areas of need, scarcity of PPE. This is a national and statewide problem. But I want to be sure that Hartford County providers who need PPE protective equipment know what the process set up by the Maryland Department of Health and MEMA is. In Hartford County, if you need PPE, the protocol is for that organization to email covidrequest@harfordpublicsafety.org. Email that email address with the request. Next, I want to mention the CDC also just issued guidance on April the 4th that now states the CDC recommends wearing cloth face coverings in public settings where other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain, for example, in grocery stores and pharmacies, especially in areas with significant community transmission. And in Maryland, the vast majority of new cases are considered to be community-based transmission. So the CDC advises the use of simple cloth face coverings to slow the spread of the virus and help people who may have the virus and do not know it from transmitting it to others. Cloth face covering should not be placed on young children under age two or on anyone who has trouble breathing or otherwise unable to remove the cloth face covering without assistance. So, so here's the confusing part. Basically, in early March, the CDC recommended against wearing masks because COVID nineteen infection is. Was thought to be primarily from symptomatic people. But now, just one month later, they realize that people without symptoms can transmit the virus. So that every person should be considered a possible carrier, including yourself. So if you are possibly infectious, then you should consider wearing a cloth mask, which is not PPE. But it can help you not infect others. This is an example of how challenging and confusing COVID nineteen is. It is far more infectious than originally thought. People without symptoms can be infectious. And until a breakthrough intervention is developed, like a vaccine or antiviral medication. Or possibly a beneficial effect of warmer weather, COVID nineteen is going to continue to be a problem. So to summarize, priority number one right now is to protect our most vulnerable populations. Especially those age sixty and over and those with underlying medical conditions. Especially those living in congregate living situations like nursing homes, assisted living facilities, detention centers and group homes. But even under the best circumstances. When widespread community transmission is already present. With today's evidence to say that a person could be infectious even without symptoms. The chances of viral spread are very high and our main goal now is to slow the rate of spread. The second priority is assessing exposure to the large groups of people like those in nursing homes, childcare centers, other, other congregate living. Facilities. Finally, the focus moves to doing everything possible to avoid overwhelming the healthcare system. Assuring that we get enough PPE. Um, assuring that the hospital healthcare system will have enough surge capacity, not just in Hartford County, but throughout Maryland. And so now the discussions will be shifting more to the stronger mitigation strategies. Of, of really encouraging people to strictly stay at home. And focus on the technical capacity issues of ICU beds, ventilators and alternative care sites. So that would be my report for now. That's where we are. But I can tell you, this is a very confusing. Uh, situation. I can see how people in the community could be very confused. But we're doing the best we can to keep up with this. And right now, uh, hopefully, um, right now Hartford County is, is staying in there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions later.
Thank you, Dr. Moy. Um, at this time, counsel, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Moy? Mr. Janidana?
Thank you, Dr. Moy, for the update. Appreciate it. How many, uh, state labs do we have in, in Maryland and, and do we have any local?
So there's one Maryland State Lab in Baltimore. They have regional, um, labs. However. I believe that they're sending all these specimens, uh, to Baltimore. Luckily, Hartford County, we have a courier system that takes these specimens directly to the lab. So anybody that wants to get it tested at the state lab, you should call the Hartford County Health Department. Because we can get a courier to take it right over there.
And, and where are they going for the testing?
Okay, um, so basically, um, and I think the, the hospital folks will talk more about this. Um, we're one of the counties that is fortunate enough to have a, actually a fairly well-developed, um. Specimen collection site at the, uh, Veep, uh, station. Uh, I know that they're, they're doing, uh, they're doing great work over there. And so what happens there is you first, you have to have a doctor's order. Then you go there and you have, uh, nurses and staff and they collect that specimen. Uh, as long as you have a doctor's order. And I know they're pretty busy. I know they're doing a good, good job. That's one place you can do it. But you know, doctor's offices can always order that test through commercial labs and, and other places. We're saying for the high risk folks, the ones in nursing homes. Go through the state lab because they can do the, the tests a lot quicker.
Dr. Moy, um, if you get a script from your doctor, is that electronic and does it go right to the? The testing people at the, uh, drive-through or how are they getting these scripts so that they don't go into the doctor's office, you know?
Right. I'm gonna probably leave that to the hospital folks because they have a whole process in place. They're probably moving it every day. So I don't know where they are at this very moment.
And, and one other question, appreciate your time. Um. Are we using or going to be using, or maybe that's the hospital question, the fifteen minute test, are they available yet?
Here's my, uh, opinion. This, as soon as we get that, we're gonna use that right away. But my understanding is that is not yet quite in Maryland. So I'll, I'll leave it to the hospital folks to speak to that as well.
Thank you for, uh, all your, uh, help, Dr. Moy.
Thank you.
Mr. Schrods?
Yeah, so Dr. Moy, I just wanted to thank you for, uh, keeping the council up to date. And I think you've been doing an outstanding job. And please extend that to all those who work with you. Within the, uh, Hartford County Health Department. And I just want to thank you for that. Not, not really any questions. I thought your presentation was. Right on, um, as other, um, colleagues may answer something, something may come to me, but, um, just want to thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Council President. Dr. Moy, uh, once again, we, uh, you know, we can't, uh, give you enough, um. Enough kudos. Uh, my question is to you, can we drill down on this face mask thing? Um, because, uh, folks think that it's just the sneezing part that sends out the particles in the air. But to my understanding, it's also, we send out particles as we speak, a certain aerosol, and that. Could be spreading the virus as well.
That, that is absolutely correct. There was a recent article that stuck to that. Uh, I don't think, I think in early March, I'm not sure if everybody understood that. But now with, with the, with more research and more studying, they're beginning to realize just speaking is enough to transmit it.
So I, I, I just, uh, I just like to, to say once again, we thank you for all your hard work and, and your dedication. And thank you for keeping us up to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dr. Moy, um, I'm sure you and I will be talking again early tomorrow morning. It seems like I have you on speed dial anymore, so. But I just want you to know how much we all appreciate you. You've heard it a dozen times. But I truly want you to know how much we do appreciate having you in the position that you're in. Uh, the, your, your temperament, uh, your personality is absolutely, uh, what we need at this time. So thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, at this time, I'd like to recognize Lyle Shelton, President and CEO for the University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake.
Good afternoon or good evening, President Vincente and council members. And thank you for giving myself and my colleague, Dr. Fahim Yunus, some time this evening. And let me introduce Dr. Yunus. And Dr. Yunus is actually a, a board certified physician in infectious diseases. That has been on our medical staff at Upper Chesapeake since two thousand and one. And currently he's the chief of our infectious diseases department and also our chief quality officer, a role that he assumed in two thousand and nineteen. In addition, he's our clinical associate professor of medicine with the University of Maryland School of Medicine. And he, along with, uh, one of our colleagues, Dr. Firmin Beretto. Have been very, very actively involved in all of our coronavirus preparation, surge planning. Uh, since, uh, we had our first case, uh, literally just about four weeks ago on March eighth. So I'll turn, I'll turn the, the phone over to Dr. Yunus and have him share some comments and give you some perspective. Uh, in, in addition to complimentary to what Dr. Moy had shared. So, Dr. Yunus.
Thank you very much, Lyle, and thank you, Mr. President and the council members for this opportunity. I would first like to thank all those amazing, fantastic team members at our hospital. Were not here, but I would not be talking if it was not for the hard work of those couple of dozen leaders in our hospital. Including Lyle who's here. They have literally spent thousands of hours into this preparedness where we are. In the next ten minutes, Mr. President, I would like to just share a little story of where we were with this COVID a month ago. Where we are and where we are going. And as I was stepping out and looking at the trees this morning, I saw the blooming trees and I really. For the past few days, actually, I've been thinking about it because there's a lesson, at least for me and perhaps for all of us. In those blooming trees that are now blooming again, but they have withered a pretty harsh winter. They do it every year. But for us as mankind, I believe there's a winter ahead of us. What do I mean by that? We will talk as I tell you what we have been through. So February, as a nation, there was not much attention on coronavirus, as many of us know. During the whole month of February, we did five hundred tests in the country, believe it or not. The whole nation, one hundred cases were diagnosed. And on March eighth, exactly a month ago, on a Sunday afternoon, we received a call. We did not think that we will be one of the first hospitals. We were major international airport in Hartford County. But as luck had it, we had a COVID patient on March eighth, a month ago. That gave us a head start. Our team came together. We started developing a lot of internal processes. We have a command center that runs every day, if nearly twenty people in it. And we started very quickly building those external partnerships, which we believe are necessary. The virus does not know where a nursing home ends and where a hospital starts and where a community starts. This virus infects everyone indiscriminately. So we're very fortunate to build that partnership with Mr. Ayers and the county. I've been to the EOC a couple of times. Dr. Moy has been a fantastic partner. We have talked together many times. We've had tabletop exercises to prepare ourselves. So the whole month of February and then March. One important thing is we very quickly after March eighth. We realized that people were worried. They wanted to get tested. And there was nowhere for them to go. So within five days, on March thirteenth, which was a Friday, we launched that specimen collection. Started at our own parking lot, which is now at Veep. What were our challenges back then? We did not have enough testing. We did not have enough PPE like Dr. Moy is saying. And again, things are changing every day. It gets frustrating sometimes, but those were our challenges. That's where we've been in the past, where we are now. So as Hartford County leaders, I think you'll be pleased to know that we are in a very good position. We're much better prepared. Our testing is far more robust. We have one to two day turnaround time for our hospital patients. If somebody came to our hospital today, we could have that test result within a day. And typically is the typical turnaround time. At present, we have adequate personal protective equipment for our team members, which is necessary for our frontline. It's always a moving target. Where we will be in a month, we don't know. But I think it's where we are right now. I wanted to share with everyone that we have twelve positive COVID patients at Upper Chesapeake right now. And one at Hartford Memorial. I think it's important for us to understand the perspective. Because if you ask me one goal, my goal is to provide you a richer perspective about it in Hartford County, something that may be Googleable. So what does this thirteen number mean? I think in comparison, if you look at other University of Maryland or other hospitals in the city. They have anywhere from twenty five to fifty patients. Our thirteen number needs to be put in perspective. All the tests that we have done in the hospital right now, ninety percent of those tests have come back negative. That's another important perspective, that if someone gets those symptoms, they should not automatically believe of coronavirus. Because this is generating a lot of fear. And we don't want to go on either extreme, the extreme of denial on one end and the extreme of panic on the other end. We are trying to make sure that we remain in the middle, that good place called preparedness. The tests where we are now, so I told you, as a country, we did five hundred tests during the month of February. And I'm very honored to share that our fantastic team has done five hundred and twenty five tests. Just here in Hartford County at that sample collection at Veep over the past one month. About two percent of all of those tests were positive. One can look at it again in two different ways. We can say we are overtesting. I think we should be overtesting because we identified eleven people who could be out in the community. Staying that infection like Dr. Moy was hinting at. If you multiply this infection, if that person gives it to three people and then it continues to go through that cycle for ten times. By the tenth multiplication, that number will be over thirty thousand. So that's the perspective once again, identifying those eleven relatively asymptomatic people in the community is very powerful. Now, where are we going with this? One more, I feel another strength that we have right now is top to bottom alignment. From Governor Hogan and his team, I think they have put some fantastic initiatives of social distancing ahead of many other states. The alignment that we have within the thirteen hospitals of University of Maryland Medical Center. And the system, and then the alignment we have with the Department of Health or nursing homes or school system. So I believe there is a lot of good that comes from that alignment. So where are we going? Nobody knows. That's where, once again, projections is one way to look at it, but we have to prepare. As Dr. Moy said, the peak in Hartford County could be anywhere from April eighteenth to first of May. What does a peak look like? Once again, I want to give that perspective to you. When I discuss with my friends in New York and New Jersey, where they have too many cases right now. Anywhere from twenty five to fifty percent of all the hospital beds would be occupied by COVID patients. That's what a peak looked like. There are hospitals right now that may have a capacity of six hundred beds and they have over three hundred COVID patients. So it's important for us to recognize what it may look like. But we don't say that to be afraid of it or to become panicky. We just want to have appropriate preparedness to the same scale. What does that mean? So this brings us to our surge plan. Our team has worked tirelessly to try and figure out how to increase capacity inside our hospital for walls. And currently, we've increased that capacity by way over one hundred beds. A lot of other areas will be converted to patient care areas. We define our surge plan in eight degrees. So the one will be normal operations and eight will be the maximum surge. I think it's important for you to know that currently we are at two out of that eight. We are in a very low surge. We are not normal. But we are at a level two from our estimation. What will help us flatten the curve? In the hospital, we already restricted visitation a while ago, as you know. But now we have gone to universal face mask. If you were to walk through one of our hospitals today, you will see people, everyone, whether they're clinical or non-clinical. Whether this is someone serving food in the cafeteria, this, someone walking through the hallway, everyone is wearing a face mask. For the same reason, we do not want anyone in our facility to be spreading that infection to our patients. These are our people. This is our county. This is our family. First, do no harm. We want to make sure that when our family members come to the hospital. Not only that they're safe, but scientifically that they are safe. Second, we have put tents in our parking lots. We have tested them. Those tents are now near operational. And we are looking into alternate sites. In case we have to expand our capacity even beyond the four walls of our hospitals. It's too premature. For me to give you specifics on that. But we are working with Mr. Hopkins, with Mr. Ayers and Dr. Moy to make sure that that site is vetted properly. We are now reaching out to our outpatient. We have been doing that. Another thing is the outreach that we have done during this process. We've contacted many of our clergies from the, the house of worship. This was last month. We wanted to make sure we partner with our community. We went and had a conference call with our nursing homes yesterday. I've been having regular conference calls with the physicians in the community who don't technically belong to the hospital. But everybody's a partner under these circumstances. I believe the story, what trees teach us. In this story, we see the harsh winter. Every year, these trees lose all their leaves. People feel if somebody never saw that before, they may think these trees are gonna die in this winter. They, they go through two feet of snow if it comes down to that. But then they regenerate after the winter. I believe there are significant economic and social losses for us in the social distancing. But that's like losing the leaves. We will get them back. Losing human beings is like losing trees. Up until now, we haven't had a single death at a. Up until now, we haven't had a single death at Upper Chesapeake or Hartford Memorial Hospital. But in our, in our work, we know that those things always happen. We will lose some trees to this harsh winter. But we rest assured, we're gonna get this. And once we get through this, the forest is still gonna be standing. So once again, this is a once in a century kind of event. I wanted to put that in perspective. The trees go through it every year. We as people are going through it once in a century. And together with the kind of unification that we are sensing, we are very confident that we're gonna get through it. And I appreciate this opportunity, sir, and I'll be happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Yannis. Counsel, anyone with questions, please? Mr. Schrodge?
Yes, um, I just wanted to ask, um, how many beds do you have total? You, you said that there's thirteen cases between Upper Chesapeake being twelve and and one in Haverhill Heights. What is the capacity and what, what, how many beds are there? Um, how many respirators? Then how does that work with patients and how are they divided up there for other sorts of reasons at your hospital? How do you have your COVID nineteen patients in one area and other patients, I assume, in another area? Um, how, how does that work?
Excellent, excellent question. So multiple questions in there and Lyle feels free to chime in. But currently with our surge plan, our capacity is well above three hundred, number one. Number two, that's why we put those tents outside that if pushed and to shove, some of these COVID patients who are stable and may not need a hospitalization will come to the tent, will not bring them inside the hospital so we don't, quote unquote, contaminate the facility or create different problems. And we'll try to discharge them from there. Number three, our capacity right now, and this is happening nationwide, and once again, I think there is unification. We are all, our interests are aligned. Our regular patient load is somewhat softer, which is a good thing. That has opened up more capacity for us. And number four, the areas that we are, the way it works is our ICU is where the safest of the patients will come. The ventilator need is, I believe, a little bit overblown. Sometimes in the media, our focus is still on that containment in the community. Prevention will always be cheaper and it will be far more effective and better for our end users. Currently, we have enough ventilators, I would say in dozens. The last I checked, we had eight ventilators being used right now. And I just want to reassure you that I think we also received a couple of ventilators today. As far as flow of the patients is concerned, once our ICU gets filled up, there is an intermediate care unit where patients of ICU status can be then housed. An intermediate care unit moves up to another unit. So we have this complete detailed surge plan that if you wanted, I could show you on some slides and pictures. But it's a overflow pattern where we continue to open up new areas when the need's there. And patients, in the end, we will, uh, pretty much use up all the available space, whether that is our conference rooms or whether that is our PACU where post-op patients or as you know, we have stopped elective surgeries. So there are a lot of proactive steps in place to make sure that we are prepared for that time.
And when Doc, when Dr. Yannis talks about the number of beds, he's talking about the number of beds at both the, the two hospitals combined.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, yes, I was initially, I realized you have all those, um, other beds here, uh, now. It all helps. I think that also like, um, you know, uh, these stay-at-home types of things, like it's not as limiting the passage of this virus, but there's not as many cars on the road. There's not as many people that are vulnerable to have accidents and, and those sorts of things. So I think you're getting, you get kind of two wins out of this when, you know, these directives come down to us.
Yeah, one of the things that I would follow up on with, with Dr. Moy said and Dr. Yannis said, this has been a very collaborative effort with the Health Department, with emergency operations, with county government.
Councilman Jan Zerdanik, you got a question?
I do. I think my mic's on. Uh, thank you, Council President. Dr. Yannis. I think we really appreciate having something of your magnitude on here giving us a lowdown of everything. I did have a couple of questions. Chad, you can answer a few of them. Initially, one of my questions on Facebook was if CPAS could be used uh, to emulate ventilators. I, I was told no, but then I've read that there's some retrofits of, um, that that's a possibility. Now, whether the hospital would do that or not, I, I don't know. But, um, I guess my concern is if this keeps blowing up and I know we have tents, where do we get, and you're looking at other facilities? Would we be able to, um, buy enough ventilators or convert those things? Is, do you see, I want to say, do you see that happening? But I'd rather prepare for the worst than for the best than the other way around.
We are completely at the same wavelength, sir. That's exactly how we are operating. And in due course, you will hear more about our, uh, alternate site plans. We are not stopping for all of the surge planning within the hospital. We will have external facilities where we can go and increase our capacity even further. Our goal internally was to at the very least double our capacity. That would be way above than many other schools are doing, number one. Number two, on the issue of ventilators, I just wanted to once again add perspective. In our experience, and this is published data, once a COVID patient ends up on a ventilator, typically that's tough battle to win. The prognosis of someone on a ventilator, it all depends on many other factors. But chances of someone surviving on a ventilator are less than fifty percent. And some studies will say less than twenty-five percent. And I know those are grim realities, but I just want to make sure I don't sugarcoat the truth. And like you said, we better be forewarned because that's foregone. We better be overprepared. And number two, the duration of ventilator. Typically, our patients will require a ventilator for two, three, four days, and then they are out of it, sometimes within twenty-four hours. Our experience with COVID is once you go on a ventilator, chances are you're on it for a couple of weeks. And those, so I think as a nation, as a county, uh, and I would say this for myself, for my own family, but I think we also at the back of our mind need to be ready for some very difficult conversations about management of scarce resources and how do we define life and at what stage in certain cases we start moving to restorative measures and make sure that we are not pinning our hopes on a machine because currently the data isn't there. For ventilators, uh, the outcomes aren't very good.
Dr. Yannis, let me make a, a comment about the bed capacity. And one of the things that this group may not appreciate is that with being part of the University of Maryland Medical System, you know, we are looking at the capacity at hospitals throughout the whole medical system. So we will know how many patients are at St. Joe's, how many patients are at Baltimore, Washington, how many patients are at, at Capital Region. And we may actually find that patients, if we got overwhelmed, that some of our patients, Hartford County residents, could go to St. Joseph Medical Center. Uh, this weekend, we actually got a call from Baltimore, Washington Medical Center because they were being overwhelmed, asking us if we could take any of their ICU patients up here in Hartford County. So the work that's taking place at the state level through the State Health Department that Dr. Moy referenced and through the University of Maryland Medical System, it's all in an attempt to make sure that if any particular county or hospital is getting overwhelmed, that there are other locations that might have capacity for patients.
Thank you, Dr. Yannis. One other question. I, I did have a friend that was released today who had COVID. He was in there for a couple of days, so I'm happy to hear about that. Once you have it and you're cured, are you then immune to it?
Excellent question. So we will know the exact answer in a year or two. And I'll tell you why. Having done this for twenty years, for all practical purposes, if, you know, if you put a gun next to my head and said, no, pick one, give me an answer, I will say yes. And here is why. Because mostly, once you recover from a viral infection, that means your body has generated antibodies. Your body has developed enough immune, robust immune response that you will be immune. The bigger question is how long will that immunity last? Will it last six months, six year or lifetime? And that is perhaps why, one of the reasons the vaccine trials take long time. Because not only, you know, the vaccine has already been injected into people, the phase one trial has started. It sort of answers your question about immunity. But we have to see, within a year, are we causing more harm, number one? Do these people develop any side effects which were worse than this, this disease itself, number one? And number two, was the immunity that we were hoping the vaccine will generate, is it longer lasting, that it lasts through a season? That it just won't wane away within three months? So I think short answer, yes, people will likely be immune. I also, they will probably be immune for at least a season, but it could be longer than that. So far, there are seven or eight strains of this virus. We have not seen any difference in the way it transmits or causes disease. So from a practical clinical standpoint, there is no difference. Did I answer your question, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm sure you're, uh, overworked. Um, but we do appreciate having you and thank you for coming and, and advising us today. Thank you.
No problem. I honestly think this is a calling. It's a service. We are trained professionals. We did not ask for or wished for pandemic, but now that it's here, we have to put our best defense and make sure our people are safe and our county remembers this time when we came together and really put together a strong defense. Are there any other questions, Mr. President?
Counsel, anyone else? I got one. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. President. Um, Dr. Yannis, um, so I just want to draw this point home. Um, the difference between a regular hospital bed and an ICU bed for this COVID virus, what's the difference and why is it so important that the ICU beds be available?
Good question. And once again, I think when COVID patients end up in a hospital, they fall into two categories. Typically, the reason is that they need some help with breathing. That's a typical reason. And so far, I think it's an eighty-twenty sort of distribution. In other hospitals where they have fifty or hundred patients that I've been talking to, eighty percent of their patients do not require a ventilator and therefore do not require an ICU bed. They can be in a regular bed with, you see those nasal cannula, the oxygen that we give through the nose. And a lot of those people actually have a better chance of healing, getting better, going home. The twenty percent or maybe, actually, the percentage is even smaller than that. In the larger studies that were published through China and Italy, the numbers are probably seven, eight percent. Those people who end up on a ventilator. Once you're on a ventilator, by definition, you're an ICU patient. Now we need to bring a bigger machinery to manage your, what we call hemodynamics. Your, there, there is a lot of things that come with a ventilator. Ventilator does not operate by itself. So that's why we need ICU beds. But currently in our surge capacity, we have significantly increased our capacity. And as Lyle was saying, uh, there were other hospitals which were maxed out this weekend. But we believe currently we are in good shape. Uh, our focus remains on aggressive early management. And another point I wanted to share with everyone, yes, we do not have a proven therapy. But that's not to say we are not doing anything for these patients. It's a much more nuanced approach. When a patient gets to the hospital, we try certain experimental therapies. The president has been talking about hydroxychloroquine. We've tried that on patients. We've tried azithromycin on patients. There's a new drug recently being, uh, looked at, uh, that we are trying as well. And then, uh, Actemra is one of those biological agents that we try on our patients who end up on a ventilator. So there are significant supportive measures that we are doing for patients to try and prevent them from getting to the ICU state.
All right, thank you. And is, one of those drugs that hydrochloroquine or something like that, is that one of those drugs that, that would help, uh, any of your patients?
Exactly. So the data is very mixed right now. We can find studies that, yes, it helps, but you can also find studies that say it does not help. But under these circumstances, in good hands, we feel it's a safe drug. And we are giving that best advantage to our patients in a very measured way where it's being, there is good oversight from professionals, experts. So yes, we have been using that drug. The, the challenge is when patient gets better, you don't know whether it was that work or they just, it was the tincture of time. I take either one, right? In this circumstance, the issue is our patients should get better. Uh, I always tell my patients, it's not about drug. It's not about my competency. In the end, it's about you. We want you to get better. We can sort out everything else that next year, but right now, we are making sure. There's another thing actually, which, uh, currently is being explored is plasma therapy. So here's another very important super lining. We talk about increasing cases, but along with that, let's not forget about eighty percent of those patients who are also getting recovered. So that number is increasing by the day. All those people who have recovered from COVID have developed antibodies in their blood. So there is a mechanism by which we, they get some plasma donors and take plasma from them that antibody-rich plasma, which can then be used into those critically ill patients who are on ventilators and see how they do. There was a study published in China, uh, published in JAMA, Journal of American Medical Association. It was conducted in China on five such patients who were actually on ventilators in very advanced disease. All five of them received that plasma. Three of them are home now. The other two are off the ventilator, very stable. So there are some encouraging, I'm working with the consortium, the university. We're trying very hard to put together that system in place where, God forbid, if we hit a bad peak, that's another modality that we will have to help our patients out.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Councilman Wagner?
I just want to thank you for your time this evening and certainly thank you for your expertise and, and everything that you're doing there at Upper Chesapeake. Um, if you would just cover, you talked about the, um, the face masks. You just mentioned about surfaces as people come in contact with surfaces in your daily life, even if they go to the grocery store or something like that. The survival of the, the virus on hand carts or whatever it may be.
Excellent question. So first of all, it's, it's a nuanced question. I'll tell you in three approaches. Let's say you live at your home and there is no one with COVID in your home. I don't want you to be worried about surfaces because the virus is not in your environment. Just one general cleaning and then live your life. And I make this point because this generates the most amount of panic and anxiety for people. And our job is to make sure we keep you safe, but we don't make you anxious over unnecessary situations. So number one is if you're in home, I wouldn't worry about it too much. The second situation you described in a parking lot, shopping cart, public places, gymnasium, practice good hand hygiene. The virus may survive a few hours, in some cases, a couple of days. Here is the important point though. Surviving on a surface is not equal to be able to cause the disease. And I'll give you a very simple example, and I'm not trying to minimize it by the, I'm again giving you perspective, a richer perspective, how we think. The dollar bills in our pocket have bacteria on them and multiple studies have proved. However, we don't get sick by those bacteria. Those dollar bills are in our pocket. I just want to make sure we have that richer perspective. Just because the virus survives a few minutes or a couple of hours on a surface, the likelihood of you getting sick from that virus is extremely small. Number three is someone like me, if I'm working in a hospital where I'm taking care of COVID patients all the time and I'm, there are five other nurses and frontline workers. Yes, our exposure to surfaces is a very different, a very high-risk exposure. We should be extremely careful. That's why we wear the gowns and gloves and wash our hands and do a lot of other things. So that's number one. Number two, God forbid you never get COVID, but people who get it, when I ask history, they when I ask history, they typically are able to link it back. They remember, I went and I attended that funeral, I was at a concert. Uh, there were these three friends that were visiting me. Oh, I went to New York. The strength this virus has is person to person. Because it has to enter a cell in order to survive. It's like milk out of, outside of a refrigerator in summer months. It's going to go bad very, very quickly. The virus wants to get inside a body because it's not going to survive outside of the body. But it's just a balanced approach. I'm not saying all surfaces are safe. I'm saying things you gotta do. Number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven have to be hand washing and social distancing and covering our cough and staying at home and avoiding parties and block parties. And I make this point because the other day, someone at the hospital said, well, we are under a lockdown, but I see a lot of block parties in my neighborhood. Bad idea. This is not the time to celebrate and have block parties. Yes, number nine and ten, maybe we need to, you know, surfaces and, but this is where, once again, if you're washing our hands, if you're cleaning your hands, you're safe. Another point I always make because it, it again generates anxiety that all the hand sanitizer is sold out. Sweat and water is actually better, more effective than the hand sanitizer. The only reason we talk about hand sanitizer is it's much more convenient. In your car, you can keep it in your office, but as far as you have access to soap and water, actually, you have a better modality, actually, I suppose. Answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, it sure did. Thank you very much. I'm very thorough.
Mr. Bula? You had no sound. Unmute your mic.
Okay, is that better? Again, thank you for your time and the briefing. Really appreciate it and, uh, for all your work. My question, um, is regarding UV light. How effective is that as far as killing the COVID nineteen viruses on surfaces as well as in the air? I mean, is that something that would be used? Is it a good idea?
Great question. Uh, it is effective. And we are, we have already ordered six such machines for our Chesapeake as well as, as Hartford Memorial to add to our armamentarium. But you're exactly correct, not just for COVID, but a whole host of other bacteria and viruses as well. So one outbreak is over, we will have a stronger infrastructure because of those machines. They are on their way.
Okay, because I was just wondering, uh, because I see, you know, and you kind of wonder about things I've looked at this in the past. And they actually have these available now, uh, for your HVAC systems where, you know, the UV light is placed on the intake. And, um, technology was developed by NASA and it supposedly kills the virus in the air as well on surfaces. I guess.
You are sounding like an infectious disease expert here. I'm very.
I try to do the research before I purchase.
Excellent point.
Mr. Woods, thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions. First is dealing with viral loads. And the second's going to deal with medications like paralytics, things of that nature. First, the viral, viral load question is, the patients that you've seen so far that are positive, do you see, uh, are they sicker when they're in more contact or exposed more? So if a patient has been exposed multiple times, can you track that? Do you see that? Are they more sick? Or if it was just a single exposure, are they less sick? Is there a relationship between viral loads?
Uh, there is no relationship on the number of exposures. I think the larger relationship is with the host factors. So what is more important, the age of the host, the underlying illnesses and the capacity to fight the virus? The immune system's capacity. My immune system is very frail. Just one exposure is going to be enough for me to go down. But if my immune system is robust, multiple exposures won't do much damage.
I understand that. Now, follow up with that. I've actually had a lot of people contact me and reach out about how the gyms are closed and, you know, what are they going to do to make sure that, uh, they keep their immune system up? And, you know, my, my quick response is, well, sleep, get enough sleep, get enough fluid, eat healthy and exercise. And then that's when I hear back, while the gyms are closed, how do I exercise? I'm like, well, anything above what you're doing now is exercise. So walk your block, walk around the house. Do you see, uh, people who at the recovering phase, are they recovering quicker when you do throw in the exercise or actually getting out, once they're able to, of course? Is that helpful?
I could not agree with everything you said. Each and everything you said is worth gold. Good sleep, good diet, exercise. And realize our air is not contaminated. We can still go out for a run in the park. We can still do pushups in our own room. We can do a lot if we have the right mindset. You're absolutely right. One thing I have always advised my patients, and this is anecdotal, you can take it or leave it, is digital disconnect. I really believe that when people are in the bed, but if they're wired with their cellphone or with their iPad or laptop, it's not the same sort of mental relaxation that you get with sleep and complete disconnect. So sleep, good exercise, good food is the best way to boost up our immune system.
Now, for medications, everyone talks and is worried about the ventilator issue and shortage of that. I, I also worry a little bit more about the medications that you need before we put you on a ventilator, your paralytics and stuff to keep you comfortable while you're on there. Is there a plan or how, and keep in mind, obviously, for those that don't know, there's shelf lifes and expiration dates and there's a lot of arguments on expiration dates, but still, we have a plan in place and we have access to putting these medications and something that we can fall back on.
Very good question. So once again, we are, we have adequate medications at this stage. We feel like the need for ventilator is likely to be between five to ten percent of the patients. Currently are seeing the same trend that nearly eighty percent of the patients don't even need a hospitalization. But ten to fifteen percent will come to a hospital, but will never need a ventilator. The last five to seven percent will perhaps need a ventilator. That's not a whole lot more than our current census. And I know those, if the numbers keep on increasing at some stage, it will become a problem. What is the X factor here is, in a direct or an indirect way, many of the medications are linked back to China. So China, either somebody is being made in China or in some cases, China is the secondary supplier. Which is being made in Singapore, the raw materials are coming from China to Singapore. So it will, in some cases, depend on China's capacity, get start their industry back up, which they are doing. But that's my only concern. Where will we be in two months or three months? As of today, we believe we don't have any shortages. But that, with a surge or with supply issues, that could change.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Yanis, um, real quick before I let you guys go. You mentioned testing and you think you said five hundred. Does that include testing that's been done by either LabCorp or Quest or anyone else?
So that five hundred twenty-five tests, Mr. President, are only the ones that we are doing at that drive up to the, at that facility where we're collecting samples. Not include other, and those are all going to LabCorp. I don't think it includes Quest. It does not include the tests being done at the state lab. It does not include tests we are doing in the hospital through University of Maryland.
And so is there a way to get that collective number of testing here in Hartford County?
I think the answer is yes, but of course, it's beyond our capacity or our scope to get that number. Uh, we're happy to provide our numbers. If state gives us their number, and the third part will be from these commercial agencies, LabCorp and Quest. And yes, that number is filed, but it's not in our scope to be able to do that today.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Moy, I see you shaking your head no. And I asked that question because in a, in a community of two hundred and sixty thousand people, uh, when I hear the number five hundred and twenty-five, um, it doesn't, uh, begin to, you know, reach the tip. You need to unmute your mic, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So it probably is possible, we would probably need the state to, to, because you're getting results from all different labs. And some out-of-state labs. And, and, and they're all of variable quality. So that would be more of a technical thing. I mean, it's probably possible, but we would probably need technical help to get that.
Had to ask.
Sure, sure.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. I know how busy all three of you are, but we appreciate the updates and, uh, uh, Dr. Moy, I look forward to talking with you in the morning and, uh, others as well.
Thank you for everything, guys.
Counsel moving on. Uh, agenda number six, approval of minutes, public hearing March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Legislative Day twenty dash zero ten, March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number seven, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. Vice President, would you please read in resolution zero twelve dash twenty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution zero twelve dash twenty, amendment to housing agency administrative plan. Introduced by council president and sitting at the request of the county executive. Resolution approving an amendment to the Hartford County Maryland Housing Agency's administrative plan. Authorize, uh, Hartford County Housing Agency to participate in the Baltimore Regional Project Based Voucher Program. The public hearing is required and this will be considered at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Len Parrish, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about this. I come to you tonight with you guys as our, uh, board that oversees our housing agency administrative plan for us. Uh, council acts as that on our behalf for the Hartford County Housing Agency. Uh, this stems from a program that was developed actually in two thousand fifteen and approved in two thousand sixteen. A regional project-based voucher program, um, being administered through the Baltimore Metropolitan Council. Uh, if you're not familiar with Baltimore Metropolitan Council, um, that's a regional group that works to identify mutual interests and develop collaborative strategies, plans and programs that help improve the quality of life and economic vitality in our communities. The communities surrounding the entire Baltimore metropolitan area. Focus really is on transportation, cooperative purchasing and community planning efforts. So we work very closely with Baltimore Metropolitan Council, uh, both on our transportation initiatives that we do, on our transit side of things, um, through procurement and our purchasing power. Um, and then, of course, this stems from the community planning, uh, side of things in our housing plan. Most recently, we've been able to participate, um, through Baltimore Metropolitan, cost-saving measures, on some analyses of impediments to fair housing, uh, both in two thousand twelve and we currently are doing one now to comply with HUD regulations, essentially allowing us to continue to receive and, and distribute, um, the federal funds with, that we receive from HUD within our community. Um, this, uh, resolution is basically an amendment to our administrative plan that just allows us to administer the program that we agreed to participate in back in two thousand sixteen. So now we're actually putting it, uh, in our plan because we're ready to start implementing, um, some of the, this program. The purpose of the program is really to assist those that are receiving housing assistance, um, to move into areas of opportunity uh, within our region, uh, with the ultimate goal of achieving self-sufficiency. That's ultimately the goal that we have for all of our clients as we move them through the program whenever possible. There is no cost to the county for us to participate in this. Um, this is simply that we've put up six of our housing choice vouchers that we do get directly from, uh, HUD. Um, we've, uh, put six of our vouchers into this pool and essentially what happens is, um, tenants are offered, uh, units, and offered, uh, housing mobility counseling with Baltimore Regional Housing Partnership, both before and after moving into new housing units, um, that are in areas of opportunity within our region. So that's, that's really the, the goal was to promote, um, move up and, um, move into areas of opportunity for, uh, housing clients that are, that are already being assisted through our programs. Answer any other questions about the program?
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Counsel, it's your time for questions. Seeing none, uh, thank you again for coming, Mr. Parrish, and, uh, we will talk to you soon. I'm sure we'll, we'll, uh, schedule this for a vote at our next meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda number nine, business from the president. Um, going to try to be as brief this evening as I possibly can. Uh, our APF meeting, our Adequate Public Facilities meeting that we had scheduled, had to be postponed and we will, uh, schedule a new date. ASAP. Um, our fiscal year twenty-one budget, or excuse me, council, uh, budget work sessions. I'm going to give these dates, uh, but please keep in mind, uh, that these dates are all subject to change. Uh, Thursday, April twenty-third, Friday, April twenty-fourth, Monday, April twenty-seventh, and Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. All of these sessions will be held, uh, via a virtual access. We will let you know as we move forward with that. Um, also, our budget public hearings are scheduled for May sixth and also, uh, May fourteenth. So again, as it gets closer, we will, uh, let you know for sure how to participate in those, uh, meetings. You know, I would, uh, I would ask you, um, just like everyone else to, uh, please continue to practice, uh, your social distancing. Um, your stay at home whenever you can. One of the, one of the things that I see here that's positive is the fact that we are absolutely all in this together. All of us are tied, uh, together at one form or another. And, uh, together we will get through this, as we all say. And with that, uh, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. And like you said, I'll just, um, reiterate what you said, just, uh, uh, we're imploring everyone out there to, uh, to heed the words of the, uh, the governor and, and the, the county executive, um, and listen to their, their mandates. Uh, this is a serious, uh, serious virus and we all need to, to, um, respect the severity of, of this, uh, this virus. So with that being said, we, we all need to practice social distancing and, and, um, encourage your neighbors. And I, I do want to say this also, that, um, now is the time that we should also be reaching out to one another and checking on one another, um, via phone calls or texts and just checking in because, uh, it's, it, some people get cabin fever and some people, um, you know, they don't have, uh, much family and, and like, uh, the council president said, that we're all in this together. So, uh, check on your neighbors, check on your family and make sure that we're, that we're all, uh, doing the right thing. So with that being said, I'll yield my time back.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as always, you know, I always talk about my fire service and public safety community. And I just want to let everyone know how proud I am of them, as we all are. They're doing an incredible job. Interesting thing with social distancing is the call volume is down. So that is outstanding because that's helping us get more prepared and ready for what could come. And I think, uh, I think that is very beneficial right now. Also, keeping with the lines of social distancing, I just want to say, stay socially distant, but not emotionally distant. Reach out, you know, talk to a family member you might not have heard from in a while and make sure everyone's okay. Keep in touch. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Jandergano?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just real quick, I want to, um, uh, we had a friend Larry Dean who was admitted, uh, at a hospital. He was released today. Uh, he did have the, uh, COVID nineteen, so I'm glad to hear that Larry's home. Um, and he survived that and is doing, doing well from what he said. So I hope everybody else does well. Stay safe and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Schroes?
Thank you, Council President. Again, I just want to thank all those amazing people on the front line. Who are doing their very best to keep us all healthy, especially our doctors and nurses. who are doing their very best to keep us all healthy, especially our doctors and nurses, fire NMS, police personnel, health department officials and those working in nursing homes. As well as those who are helping us at the grocery store and other convenience stores. Those folks are probably at, you know, very likely to maybe get this because they're in contact with so many people. And it's, it's great to see so many of, of, of those individuals now, of course, wearing masks and gloves and that's going to help us all. So, um, let's all just try to be safe. I know we're going to get through this together. Um, lastly, I'm so glad to hear, um, I know two individuals that are, are fighting COVID nineteen right now, one of which, uh, uh, Councilman Jan Jordan mentioned Larry Dean and it's, it's great news to hear that he's, uh, been coming home and, um, you know, I know it's been tough on him. The other individual is still fighting really hard. So anyway, um, again, I know we'll get through this, but I think it's, we also need to pray and think about those folks who have, um, loved ones who are in the hospital for even other reasons and they cannot be with them. So it's, um, very hard on, on all of us and all those, um, individuals who have friends and loved ones in the hospitals that can't be there with them or be at the waiting room, even if it's a someone in your family that's, you know, having a baby in one of those great moments. Well, you know, there are individuals that aren't there that normally would be there. So it's not easy and I know we're going to get through this. Um, so, uh, let's all just hang in there and take care of one another. So have a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrude. And Mr. Wagner? Need to unmute your mic, sir.
There we go. Somebody doesn't follow the rules very well. I'd like to thank all those that were responsible for making this meeting happen this evening. I know a lot of time and effort went into that, the council president, to you and, and all the others that it worked so hard to make sure this did happen this evening. And also I think that the, the public should heed all the warnings we heard this evening and Dr. Moy and Dr. Yannis did a fine job of, of bringing it down to, uh, uh, the, the lay language so that we know exactly what they were talking about more than what we hear on national news. And, uh, if you heed the, the warnings and, and do what you're supposed to do, we'll all get through this together. And lastly, we, we wish our families a safe and health, healthy Easter and a blessed Passover as they, uh, celebrate in isolation this season. So thank you very much. And, uh, that's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for those words. Councilman Buella?
Thank you, Council President. And first of all, I just want to say, uh, thank you to everybody that made this meeting possible this evening. Uh, because otherwise I wouldn't have been able to attend it. I, uh, just, Gene and I just returned from, um, trip, uh, to Texas, um, see our new grandchild and our kids and we were on a self-imposed quarantine there two weeks and, uh, for the, uh, governor's executive order, since we travel out of state, we're on a self-imposed quarantine for the next two weeks, uh, which we, uh, we will abide by. Uh, you know where to find me, but you can't come in. But, uh, can give me a call. I have plenty of time now to answer calls. Uh, and also I want to say thank you to my good friend, uh, Frank Duncan, who, uh, delivered groceries to us today and ran some other errands and dropped us off, uh, dropped it off at the door. Also, I want to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Panos, uh, and all the staff at Citizens Care Nursing Home and Happy Grace for the amazing job that they're doing. As of today, there are no, uh, confirmed faces at Citizens Home Nursing Care. So I just want to say thank you to all those. And with that, Mr. President, thank you.
We will talk soon. I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilman Buella, for your words and, uh, good to have you back home. So with that, um, I guess we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I too want to just thank everyone again, uh, Ms. Dixon, uh, for you as well with all of your input with this meeting. Uh, look forward to our next council meeting, which is scheduled on the fourteenth. So be talking to you all soon. Good night.
Council President, do we have anybody signed up to speak tonight?
There is no one signed up this evening. We do not have comments with this abbreviated agenda. Next week we will.
All right. Everyone take care.
Take care.
Good evening.